Collision Auto Repair Specialists in Hesperia offers free rental and towing. Their excellent service and quality work is always guaranteed. And any military or public service employees can receive up to $500 off their deductibles. Collision Auto Repair Specialists in Hesperia, where we meet by accident. Find us online at carbsbodyshop.biz.
When fire and water threaten your business, hand the cleanup over to the team that stays with you every step of the way in your journey back. Serve pro like it never even happened.
Hello and welcome to another edition of Valley Insider Podcast. I'm Andrew Caravella. One of the more controversial and ongoing stories in the city of Victorville and the rest of the high desert is Councilwoman Blanca Gomez and her challenging relationship with the public at large as well as local government. I wanted to present a transparent, in-depth and thorough interview for the community to show both sides. Because yes, there is more than one side to every story. Blanca Gomez declined several attempts at sitting down with me for this interview. For the record, Ms. Gomez is always more than welcome in the future to have a conversation with me if she chooses to do so. With Blanca's permission, we sat down and spoke to her campaign manager, Bobby Borisov, as this was the closest that we could get to Blanca's side of the story. And please be advised that tonight's interview will include information about a pending lawsuit. Names will be mentioned and evidence will be presented that clears up any loose ends. I anticipate the story does not end with this interview, although it does add another chapter to the book. Here's my interview with Bobby Borisov on Blanca Gomez.
We cover the local stories you want to hear. From Apple Valley to Asperia to Atlanta to Victorville. Valley Insider Podcast, elevating the high desert like never before.
I want to thank you for coming today to do the interview with me. This is going to be a very interesting interview. I don't believe any local media has actually sat down to this degree to really kind of analyze and look at how much of this topic has become a hot button in the high desert, not just in the city of Victorville. One of the things that I want to start with is some of the things that have happened to this council member over the last four years since being elected. But before we get there, I want to talk a little bit about you, just so people know this is as close as it gets to the real thing. Your name is Bobby Borisov, you're the congressional campaign manager for 2022 for Blanca Gomez. Blanca is intending to run for office in DC. But before we get there, we really want to kind of look at Blanca and see who she is. And for everyone that's listening to this podcast or watching it right now, we have been working on trying to get Ms. Gomez, Councilwoman Gomez, for quite a while to sit down and do a proper interview with us. Unfortunately, Blanca is too timid with local media and the way that she has been reported on that she has declined to be with us here today. The offer for her to actually sit in studio with us to just observe the interview that I'm doing with her campaign manager was also asked of her. And at this time, she is still declined. However, if Ms. Gomez wants to in the future do a sit-down interview with myself, she is more than welcome to at that time. So, but you're as close as it gets to the real thing today. So we're going to sit and we're going, we're going to look at some of the stuff that has kind of been troubling or has been, I guess, popular. And that can be positive or negative with local residents in Victorville and then people regionally in the high desert, you know, because she is a public leader that does represent the area, you know, also, just going forward. Bobby, tell me a little bit about yourself, you know? How did you come to be the campaign manager for Blanca going into 2022?
Great, and thank you for having me here today.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your invite. I came to be the campaign manager, we met with Blanca in 2017 in the city of Fontana. I was doing a project of 500 units affordable housing. And I was doing it in the local city Fontana. And that's how I met Blanca through activists and people that are for affordable housing. And since then, we connected with Blanca and we started talking. And recently, when I heard that she is running for office for second term for city council in Victorville, I joined her campaign, even it was a little bit late. And I am happy that she got reelected with the most votes in the city of Victorville for second term.
Right.
And that speaks a lot that she got reelected with the most votes. And that's for itself, I think it's a major breakdown for Blanca.
Yeah, I want to talk about that because there is, and I did this for, you know, our local station when people were voting last year, you know, vote 2020 is what we called it. There is a dramatic shift and change now here in the city of Victorville.
I hope for good.
Well, we'll see. I'm one of those, I've been in entertainment long enough, it's I gotta see it to believe it kind of things. And what I mean by I say dramatic change, I mean, we have five women now that represent the city of Victorville. All diverse, all different ethnicities, more than likely, all different personalities. I haven't had an opportunity to actually see any of the council meetings yet because I've been very busy. But it does appear that we have an extremely diverse council. I do know 22 people ran for city council, which is probably some of the most in the history of the city. I do believe that that is a direct result of Blanca over the last four years. People were motivated to try to remove her from office. If I'm wrong, then the timing's impeccable, you know, it's just one of those coincidences. What I saw, what I saw though, you know, regardless of how I feel, regardless of how other people feel in the city of Victorville, what I saw is that she was reelected. And like you said, she was reelected with the most votes at the time of the calculation. And I'm not too familiar, but I do believe the charter says that that would make her the mayor of Victorville. If I'm wrong, then, you know, I would like to be corrected on that. But I guess that's not what happened. I guess, I guess the city of Victorville decided to have Ms. Deborah Jones become the mayor of Victorville. Am I wrong in my facts? Is there something that I'm missing here that she's currently not the mayor? She's obviously on the council, but she's not the mayor. And before you answer that, I just, I just want to bring note that obviously we had no election fraud here, you know? That shows so many people believe in Blanca, that's what that shows. That shows there's a city, there's residents here in the city of Victorville who voted for her for reasons, despite all the, all the stuff that has happened over the last four years, which we're going to get to some of that also today. That tells me Victorville has a different idea what they want to represent them versus what people think Victorville should be about. There's two different sides here. And I honestly believe that that other side is not acknowledging the side that voted for Blanca, you know? They're very quiet on it. It's almost like they're embarrassed to even admit that there's something going on, you know, as far as, you know, how people view Blanca. So if you can answer my question, am I correct? Is she supposed to be mayor right now? And if so, why is she not?
Regarding the mayor race, she's not a mayor. And from what I know, she doesn't plan to be a mayor. She plans to take higher position in Washington DC. Regarding mayor race, it's interestingly enough, and I learned that recently, that the city of Victorville, people of the residents of Victorville, they cannot vote for a mayor.
Right.
It's only the city council can vote for a mayor and choose four or six people can choose who to be the mayor for the rest of the 130 million, which I don't think in my opinion that's right.
I mean, 130,000, right?
Sorry.
That's okay.
130,000.
A million would be a lot.
It's, yeah, my mind works on million of people because of the congressional race. But it's, I don't think that is right. And I think people, the residents of city of Victorville should have the right to vote for a mayor. Because right now, the way the city is operated from a business perspective, the city manager has the most right to make the highest decisions in the city of Victorville, not even the city councils. And that's what is happening now. And I do believe that because of the local politics, because of the money and the budget, the way they spend, local politicians have interest to run their own business running and operating with the taxpayers' money and push people like Blanca that are questioning the budget and want accountability and transparency. They want those people out. And therefore, they make all these false stories about Blanca, which is not right.
So what you're saying is the votes, you know, of people locally don't really matter when it comes to, you know, who gets to be mayor in the city of Victorville? Basically, Blanca's on the council, you know, because she had enough votes. And then after those people are on council, you know, after an election, then the council votes then and there who gets to be the mayor?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. I want to get into some of the stuff that I found on Facebook over the last several years in regards to Blanca. There's so many different, what's the word I'm looking for? Colorful statements that have been made about her. Specifically, we're going to spotlight during this interview, a Facebook page called Remove Blanca Gomez. I'm not exactly sure who it is that runs this page. However, I have, I have noticed several things that I want to point out. I do believe that this is a fan page for Blanca. And I mean that in the most ironic way because you can either like or hate somebody in this world when it comes to public figures, okay? The other option is just to not care about them. But in this case, most people either like or dislike or even hate public figures. And whatever you, whatever content you create for that develops as a fan page. You could literally be a fan of disliking the person. That is, that is a fact, that is a statement. I can just go on further, some of these, you know, start greetings, RBG fans, you know? Not Ruth Bader Ginsburg, but Remove Blanca Gomez, that's what the RBG stands for, fans. It's a fan page, you're referring to your following as fans. Some of the stuff on here, Bobby, you know, I don't know if you've had a chance to read some of this stuff, but it gets pretty intense. This one from December 2019 says, "Today, Friday the 13th, was an unlucky day for Councilmember Gomez. She had a pivotal hearing date at the courthouse at 8:30 AM regarding whether or not she would get her custody visitation rights reinstated." So we're obviously talking about a personal matter here with a public figure. I believe a child custody or visitation thing in this case. Some of the, some of the, all caps, you know, things that this person who posted this wanted to mention was Gomez was a no-call, no-show. Gomez's blatant abandonment of her daughter throughout the last six months of hearings is beyond my comprehension. Now here's the great news, you know, this beautiful and smart 11-year-old girl will grow her roots with a father who is kind, caring, adoring, and unlike Gomez, mentally stable. I don't know, to me, that sounds like a pretty intense thing to report on. You know, journalism, you're not really supposed to take a, you know, take a, take a feeling towards, you know, an opinion towards, this probably isn't journalism, but like I said, it's a fan page, you know? We are, we, meaning the fan page, is trying to point out some things about Blanca Gomez in a very snooty and negative way. That was December 2019, almost a year later, November 2020. Another, you know, from Remove Blanca Gomez, another post says, "Some mentally disturbing news." And it says here in all caps, "Psycho bitch Gomez is back on the dais. Four more years of BS, oh, wait a sec, that's if she doesn't go to jail." I don't know why they abbreviated BS when they were, you know, so, you know, prominent on using the word bitch. Here's, here's how I look at this. Yes, Councilwoman Gomez has had some suggestive behavior in the past, you know? A good example, you know, if I'm, if I'm going to be fair and balanced with this interview, she has worn on the dais, you know, a shirt that says, "F*** ICE," you know? We have all, we've all seen that picture and, you know, we all know that she's making a statement. So sometimes it's very possible that when public figures, you know, do such things like that, use those type of actions or make those type of statements, it does charge the following. Good example, if you want to look on the national level, we, you know, President Donald Trump, by the time this comes out, it'll probably be former President Donald Trump, you know? Says something and then there's a reaction, right? We have the same thing locally with Councilwoman Gomez. You know, if and when she does something, this is the type of attitude that comes out with some of the people. Now, I don't know about you, I don't know where you went to high school, but when I went to high school, we had this thing called Mean Girls, right? Mean Girl Tactics. And what I see when I see stuff like this online from grown adults, grown adults, right? That should be mature and should be caring themselves with some composure. Some of the behavior that I have seen with Ms. Gomez, I see the same people or I see people doing similar things with how they post. And I'm just like, you're no better than the, than what? You claim Blanca is a problem, you're no better than the problem in that, in that instance. You're not helping the situation, you're not, you're not mature and appropriate when it comes to pointing out what you don't agree with. And, you know, the argument to that is, oh, well, we're frustrated, you know? Okay, well, if you're so frustrated that you can't even keep your composure online, I mean, okay. It's just going to continue, you're not solving a problem, you're just whining like a little child. That's what I see when I see this. I don't know how else to explain it any other way. One more, one more post here from the same year and month, November 2020. "Hey Blanca, which of these seven signs of sociopath apply to you?" I mean, obviously, you know, and I don't know Blanca on a personal level. You know, I do know that, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, but she is a, she's a product of the system. And by system, I mean she was in foster care growing up, is that correct?
That is correct, and that speaks volume for itself because, yes.
Sorry, sorry to cut you off, but before we get there, anyone could Google information online about the foster care system, you know? There's a lot of ugliness there, you know, and the statistics are there to show that. And yeah, sometimes, you know, you know, mental issues or things that you cope with, with stress and anxiety or certain behaviors are a direct result of what happened to you in foster care. And obviously, we're not here today to talk about Blanca's experience in foster care, that's her story. And, you know, she is more than welcome at a later date to have that conversation with me if she chooses to. But with that being said, you know, this person who's posting this stuff on this fan page, as we've already identified it as, "Seven signs of a sociopath apply to you." Well, sociopath tends to be a mental diagnosis. So either we're poking fun at people that have mental disorders, not to say Blanca is a sociopath here, or we're trying to use people that have a mental disorder to explain Blanca Gomez. And for somebody that has been in foster care, who may have, may suffer from certain struggles or has certain challenges in life, that's super cruel to do. And it does speak volumes about the type of people that support this type of speech online. You know, you know, and then here are the seven signs, you know? Doesn't respect social norms or laws, lies, deceives, uses false identities and uses others for a personal gain, doesn't feel guilt or remorse for harming others. And then they mentioned the mayor, Russ Blewett's funeral and how she devastated the family. And then again here in parentheses, "You effing bitch." They didn't actually use the F-word, which I find ironic because they used the word bitch, they said F and then the letter N. And then also having a strong sense of superiority and unwavering opinion, not learning from your mistakes. See how I helped you out, Blanca? So that's, that's what it says here, "See how I helped you out, Blanca." So it's very sarcastic, it's very cruel, and it's, again, I don't know if this person is angry that's created this, this fan page that a lot of people are now following. Sometimes the shares and the likes are more than the people that actually follow the page, you know, that I've noticed. And, you know, there's a lot of negative energy there, you know? And it's, it's troubling to see that this is how we treat people in public office despite the situation, you know, despite some of the things that are going on, you know? There is a right way and there is a wrong way to criticize somebody, right? If, if, if I was doing a news report on, on some of the decisions that Ms. Gomez has done over the last four years, I would be pointing those out and I would not be putting a narrative to that stuff online. Because one, that's a misuse of journalism and two, that's just cruel to do to somebody. You're not being fair in your complete, you know, assessment of the situation. And, and that's what, that's what this is. This is a fan page for hate towards, or severe dislike, if hate is such a strong word for people, for Councilwoman Blanca Gomez. Let me ask you, and I know I've talked so much, Bobby, but I do appreciate you being here. Let me ask you, is Blanca aware of fan pages like this or people that are like this? And if so, has she read some of this stuff herself?
Absolutely, Blanca is aware of that. And I like to comment that what you mentioned about this Facebook, it's, it's beyond freedom of speech. It's about hate and cruelty. And that is the result that we're living in a nation that is divided. And we may apply the same national politics to local politics in Victorville, where people are divided and people don't know what is the true. Because people don't validate and we don't have this journalism like what you're doing to question and to verify all the sources of the information, is that right or not? Which we need it a lot.
Let me ask you, so Blanca has seen some of this stuff, obviously, or maybe she's seen all of it. Does Blanca identify that some of the actions that she has taken over the last four years may have motivated people to say such things about her online? Does she identify any of that? People are allowed to make mistakes, we're all human. And, you know, to me, I just can't see that she feels everything that she's done up to this point has been justified and right. I'm sure she looks back at some of the stuff over the last four years and says, "I could have said that instead, or maybe I should have done that different." Does she ever do that with any, anything at all in regards to how people are reacting to her?
Regarding the reaction of this Facebook, what I know, and that is something that will have to be verified with Blanca regarding the Facebook. But from what I know, in 2018, there was signatures to remove Blanca official. And they did not go anywhere, they had only like 127 or something like that, and they have to take it down. Now, Facebook, this hate piece of Blanca has over 1,000 followers. And I'm not sure if that is just as a result of social media not being transparent and open. And you can create fake followers, I'm not sure what it is. However, that hate speech is serving good to Blanca right now. Because, and it was advised by the lawyers to leave it for right now. Even Facebook is aware of that political hate piece. Because right now, Blanca is suing the city for all these damages that you just mentioned that they have caused to Blanca.
What are some of those damages? Because the city, just, you know, so we're right, just so people that are listening or watching this know, the city is something completely separate from this fan page. So when you say, when you say city, what are some of the damages that Blanca is claiming as a result of suing the city?
Okay, I am not sure how disconnected the cities from this Facebook.
What I'm saying is, is like, the city did not create this Facebook page, at least to my knowledge. They, this is not, why do we think, do we think that the city did create this fan page?
I don't know.
Okay, do we know what Blanca thinks? Does Blanca think the city created this fan page?
I don't know.
Okay.
I cannot answer that.
Okay.
Because I don't know.
But we can talk about the damages, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's talk a little bit about that.
Because a lot of these damages that are caused by the city, they are on that hate piece. And one of the most recent one is the EDD fraud that the city is claiming. And the city has requested even the district attorney office of county of San Bernardino to investigate Blanca for EDD fraud. Now, interestingly enough, we have also requested from the EDD, and I was on, I was on the call with the EDD person that answered in front of their own judge.
So it was an EDD judge or a judge overlooking this case? Or was it just a representative from EDD on the phone?
It was a representative from the EDD and a judge.
Oh, and, oh, so there, so there was two separate people from the state on the phone in regards to this alleged EDD fraud?
An employee from the city, representing the city.
Do we, are you allowed to tell me who the employee was from the city?
I will provide you the, it's a public information, so I'll provide you the recording, so you will, you will get it.
Okay.
It's the EDD person clearly stated in front of the judge and the city that Blanca has not done anything wrong.
So I believe the city came forward and said that there was, there was something that showed that she had signed up for EDD during the pandemic. And she had referenced the city of Victorville as one of her organizations that she's, she's worked for. But as we know, council people are elected, you know, and they get a stipend. They're not actually city employees, if memory serves me correctly. That's, that's what the city of Victorville had released during the time of this episode. So did she? Did she actually claim that she worked for the city of Victorville during that time?
Technically, she works for the city of Victorville because she's being compensated under 1,000 a month, but nobody can live on 1,000 a month.
Cool. So does, so does EDD identify her then, even though it's like a stipend that she's getting, correct? Does, does the city identify, I'm sorry, does EDD identify that as quote employee? It's like a loose term in this case.
That is a good question and very technical, and it's not to my knowledge. I'm sorry, I don't think I can answer that question. However, what I can answer, and I heard it from the EDD, and it is on a public record, that she has not done anything wrong, according to the EDD.
According to the EDD, okay. So, so where are we with that then now? I mean, is it a closed case in regards to EDD? Or is there more to come in regards? That's, that, is that part of some of what Blanca is suing about?
It's according to the EDD, that is a done case because she has not done anything wrong. Now, anybody can come against Blanca and initiate investigation, but they cannot prove anything wrongdoing.
Is Blanca suing for defamation? Is that what she's doing with the city?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And discrimination and all that.
Okay, I want to also talk about some other, for some people, their highlights, for other people, their, their bad moments in the last four years. There was the infamous incident of Blanca, you know, trespassing at the city of Hesperia. And an officer on Facebook Live, which Blanca was recording, actually, I guess the word is arresting her? Is that the correct word to use or was she detained?
According to the sheriff that arrested her, it's, it's an arrest. However, it's never been, it's never been recorded on the records of the sheriff department.
But that wasn't true. In fact, we found the actual media advisory dated for August 2nd, 2018. The date in question does in fact show that the police did arrest the councilwoman for trespassing and resisting arrest. A call to the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Headquarters revealed through the public information officer that Blanca had a booking number on file.
We're having a very good interview and I like it, the way we are going and we are open with everything. And I encourage anyone that listens and watches the video or this interview to go to GoFundMe and Blanca Gomez so they can see the video and the lawsuit themselves.
So, okay, so the video is there then? So GoFundMe, Blanca Gomez, we just search Blanca Gomez, it'll come up. How much is she, is she trying to raise funds, like how much?
Initially, she is trying to raise 250,000. Because we know this type of lawsuits will take millions of dollars and it will take years to being resolved. And the main reason for this lawsuit is not only defend herself, but also defend her duty as a council member and defend the public, the people, and show the people that she has not done anything wrong. All these accusations throughout the years and trying to put her down, all that is being produced and it's wrong. It's, as you mentioned earlier, it's a cruelty and it is sarcastic too.
Let me ask you, how much, how much is Blanca going to sue for? Or is that something that will be determined on, you know, once an attorney, you know, attaches to the case?
It is open for a jury trial and the jury will be deciding. It is open for a jury trial and the jury will be deciding.
How much?
How much and, and what?
Okay. You know, there are going to be, and that's just because I've seen this before with, you know, with different things, uh, with, with public figures. There are going to be people that are claiming that this is just a fundraising attempt. Sue the city, get millions of dollars and then use that in turnabout for running for D, you know, co, you know, con, congress, you know, Congress in DC. Is that the case here?
Not at all.
Okay.
Because this lawsuit will take years. She has to run for Congress and get to Congress in 2022 election.
And it'll take longer than that for this case to get seen through?
That will take much longer for this case to get settled and it, we don't even know how it's going to be settled. The most is, uh, uh, Blanca intention is to expose that she has not done anything wrong and to inform the people that she is a fighter and she stands for the people.
Valley Insider obtained the actual court documents that Blanca Gomez filed with United States Court. The 53-page document can be viewed on her official GoFundMe account. In the lawsuit, the councilwoman lists by name several high-profile people in the High Desert that she's taking to court. The list includes the names of former mayor of Victorville Gloria Garcia, city manager Keith Metzler, current Victorville City Mayor Deborah Jones, Victorville City Attorney Andre De Bornowski, former Victorville City Councilmember Jim Cox, Victorville City Clerk Charlene Robinson, Victorville resident Marshall Walters, deputy city manager for Victorville Sophie Smith, Victorville's Public Information Officer Sue Jones, the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department and city manager of Hesperia Niles Benson. Has she filed any paperwork yet or is she still at the beginning of this, is, is trying to raise the funds to?
She has filed paperwork, yes. It's a judge has been assigned. It's a federal case.
Okay. All right. So will it be, is it going to be overlooked here in, in San Bernardino County or is it going to?
It's a central district court.
Okay.
It's a federal court.
I don't get involved in all that stuff, so I'm a little, uh, I'm a little rusty when it comes to the law. Okay. Very good. Um, I want to talk about, I want to talk about Congress. Uh, you guys released a, 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 a press release on PR Newswire, uh, back in November of 2020. Blanca will be serving for another two years before she most likely will be elected for Congress in 2022. You say will be elect, like most likely will be elected, but we don't really know, right? If she's going to get elected or not. There's a lot of primaries and stuff that have to happen first, right? Like there's, there's a bunch of pre-steps, kind of like, kind of like audition for American Idol. There's a lot of different steps that you have to take before you, you get to that final round to actually run for Congress and compete against who you're, you know, you're running against. Um, I just wanted to clarify that. I, I, you know, I think it's great though, you know, that we are, you know, Blanca's team is anticipating that she will be, most likely will be elected for Congress. That's, I mean, that's a great attitude to have, but I just wanted to point that out. Um, I did notice this, this statistic and I, I want to know where you got this from. Many of the people from the minority groups, which are over 80%, are claiming that they have been having difficulty starting a business in Victorville because city authorities are intimidating them. I'm assuming that, that number is coming from minority groups in, in Victorville. Uh, but where does that, where does that number come from? 80%?
I've been talking to a lot of, uh, local groups and minority businesses.
Are you allowed to give me like an example of some of the groups?
Uh, not at the moment.
Okay.
Because they are having, uh, they have started their own, uh, litigations against the city and I don't want to interfere with that.
Have they filed paperwork?
Yes.
Okay.
They have.
All right.
And I don't want to interfere with that. It's, it's, uh, while, while being investigated. However, that is from, from them, from their words, that, uh, uh, they're intimidated to go to the city to even ask for permits.
Is that what they are? I mean, obviously we can't say who they are, but we can talk about it. Is that what, is that what the litigation is about? The, the, the fact that they're claiming that they feel intimidated by the city?
Yes.
Okay. I want to talk about the, this $96,000 that the city accuses Blanca of, um, misusing the funds, using too, too many funds? What, what is the city claiming?
Now, the city is claiming it's, uh, Blanca used these funds for public records, but how can someone use the funds for public records? And this is request from Blanca on behalf of residents to check public records for their property, for their business.
Right.
And the city has attached bill to it. However, those, those public records are free to anyone that walk into the city and have a request to see the zoning, the permit. It should be free and they attach a number just to make Blanca look bad in front of public.
So what, there's like an administration fee if I want to see that stuff?
Something like that.
Do you know how much it is?
No, it's, we, this, this, yes, every city, every county, as a developer, I can tell you as a businessman, I have requested many public records throughout the years. It's free for everyone. It's $0. There is no such thing as a public record. It's free. That's why it's public. And in that same way, it's, um, going back to the trespassing, Blanca was arrested on a public property. How can somebody be in violation on a public property?
Well, it's, it's, well, okay. So it's public property, but she was like in an office inside the building, right? Which it's, it's, it's not private property, but it is possible to trespass on public property. Good example, what we saw on January 6th at the Capitol, a lot of those people that got, uh, convicted, one of the things that they were charged with was for trespassing. Uh, you know, it's a, it's a section of the public property that is not, that is not open to the public. And, you know, I'm not exactly sure what is in that room or, or, or why the city of Hesperia has deemed where she was located when the officer came as, as, uh, you know, grounds for trespassing. But I do believe cities have that right. I mean, you could be trespassing in a public park in the middle of the night if it's after hours, you know?
Uh, you, you're right about it. And, uh, like you mentioned on, uh, January 6th, people transpass the Capitol, they got arrested and they got charged. They trespassed by breaking the windows and breaking the doors. That is clearly trespassing.
But being behind closed doors in the city of Hesperia's, I guess it's, I guess it's their city hall, right? Was, was that what a?
City hall.
It was their city hall, right? I mean, I guess, I guess the question is, did a, did a, did a public official or did even the receptionist at, at the front counter give Blanca permission to, to be in that particular section of the building, you know? And if not, then that's, that's trespassing.
And if it is trespassing, I would agree with you, but why is she not booked and charged with trespassing in the sheriff's records?
You, you, you do have a point there. The video.
If she, if she trespasses, she should be charged with trespassing.
The, the video does.
But they did not, which is a bias.
The video does show that she had asked if she was being arrested and then finally, reluctantly, the, the deputy said yes. Uh, even though it appears, if, if you take that aspect out of it, it appears that she was detained for X amount of time and then released. But yeah, she asked and then the officer said, you know, yes, after she said, am I being arrested? So I'm, I'm, I'm under the impression that, that that constitutes, uh, being arrested. Going back to this $96,000 though, I mean, for people that don't know how it works, uh, and, and that's why I'm asking, we're, you know, where does this money come from? And you've already explained that to me. I mean, it, it's not like there's like a credit card for the city of Victorville and Blanca just kept charging it up, right? Like.
And, and, and I would, I would, uh.
Are they claiming that these are reimbursements, uh, uh, up, up to $96,000? Is that, is that what they're, they're claiming?
This is like the, the arrest with the sheriff. It doesn't exist anywhere on documents. And, um, uh, I would like to see this $96,000 bill and itemized for what she has been charged. Like when you go to a restaurant and you pay the bill that, for the order that you made, they always give you a receipt. Now, I would like to see that receipt, what she has been charged for the $96,000, instead just throwing out in the paper, $96,000. And that's one of the reluctance of Blanca going in front of, um, the news, the local news, is that, um, they would take information that is not verified from the city or from residents and they will publish it.
If it's, if it's taken from the city, the city is a, is a public entity, whether the information we agree with or we don't agree with, I'm not saying that the information is right, but whether we agree or disagree, that is the source. Uh, you know, oftentimes, uh, you know, people will just assume that the government's corrupt uh, because the information they're getting isn't, isn't to their liking. And I'm not saying, you know, whether or not, you know, people in the city of Victorville are corrupt or not, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying when you say sources, that's how they, that's how you check your sources. You know, the source in this case would be the city of Victorville and the city is claiming something as far as up to $96,000. So, you know, as you say, the question is, can we see an itemized, you know, list or breakdown of what this $96,000 is?
And then that is a great statement that you just brought and I'm glad to have this discussion with you.
Oh, thank you.
Because you're questioning and you want to verify everything that has been said. Is it right? Is it not? Not everybody is perfect.
Right.
But we all want to make something good.
That's correct. We wanted to know as well, what this massive bill was all about. So we contacted the city of Victorville. In an official statement, the city is aware of potential litigation alleged by council member Blanca Gomez. However, at the time of this communication, the city had not been served and had not reviewed the specific allegations. It is unfortunate that the governance of the city is impacted by this distraction by one of its legislators. However, this won't deter the city's focus to provide the highest level of service to its citizens and visitors. One of the things that I, I was very interested in hearing, and again, I'm going to have to check on this also, uh, Blanca, because we are in a pandemic right now and obviously this interview, if you're watching it, is being socially distanced. Uh, that's why we don't have a camera with both of us on at the same time, uh, because that's the space that we're filming this in. So, uh, but, uh, one of the things, uh, you know, the city of Victorville is currently doing in, in light of us, in spite of a pandemic is, uh, they're doing Zoom calls or on, you know, or FaceTime calls, whatever you want to call it. Uh, you guys are saying that Blanca is being muted and blocked on city calls. So I'm assuming that the city is, uh, moderating the calls. So, okay. So, I mean, do we have any proof that, that they are doing that? Or is it, or are we just assuming that maybe she's having a bad connection or something?
We do have proof. We have recordings of the city meetings from the site when Blanca takes it. And, uh, when it's time for Blanca to speak, oftentimes she is muted or kicked out of the sessions. Also, Blanca has been now for months already suspended. They are not giving her access to the city building.
So she's not allowed to be on the property?
She is not allowed to be on the property.
When was she suspended?
She, she, it's, her access is suspended to the city with the FOP.
Okay. Is that everybody because of the fact that we're in a pandemic right now?
Only Blanca. The other council members, they have access to the city. It's only Blanca. And that is what is not equal and fair treatment.
Okay. I'm writing this down. I apologize if you guys are on the edge of your seat with this interview. We also asked the city of Victorville about that fair treatment and it did warrant a response back. According to the city, due to new COVID policies, the city has practiced social distancing. One of the ways they've done so is by having separate rooms for each council member. IT has been providing computers for official business, including council meetings. And when asked about Ms. Gomez having participation on-site for those meetings, the city said that Ms. Gomez has access to the building during the times of council meetings. I want to show you a picture that I, uh, recently uncovered in, uh, one of the local newspapers or media entities here in the High Desert, the Daily Press. Uh, this is, uh, an article that was written about Blanca and I want you to look at that picture right there. We guys, uh, if you're, if you're listening to this, thank you for listening and subscribing. Uh, if you want to see the picture, you're more than welcome to, uh, to subscribe or follow us on Facebook, watch or YouTube, uh, at KVBB. Okay. So this picture, what, to me, after four years of some of the things that Blanca has come across, you know, talking about everything that's happened to her, you know, assuming for the fact, for, for a minute, that some of perhaps the trauma or the experience that she had growing up in the system, you know, as a foster kid, you know, has, has possibly, you know, overflowed into her adult life. Uh, hence some of the behaviors that, you know, or the actions that Blanca's taken over the last four years or some of the statements that she said. Um, so if you, if you take that out of the equation for a second, that's why I wanted to mention that. If you take that out of the equation for this, for a second and you look at this elected official who's leaving, uh, a council meeting or, yeah, walking by the council chambers, she looks tired. She looks done or over it, you know? She looks, she looks, uh, she's, she, she looks with, with disapproval, I guess is the word that I'm, I'm saying in regards to her treatment. Is that a fair assessment or is there, is there something I'm missing here with, with how Blanca feels up to this point? I guess she's a fighter, but again, we're all humans and we all get fatigue. Is there, is that a fair assessment of, of where Blanca sits right now with everything that's happening, going on right now as an elected official? Or is there, is there another component to this as far as her wellbeing and how she feels? Cause you have more access to her than other people.
I think, um, Blanca doesn't look anything different to me on that picture. And, um, she came from the foster care and she, she accomplished to have a master degree. She, she is somebody with master degree. I think she's a very strong person. She is having a lot of, uh, major national organizations behind her. They are supporting her.
Which, which organizations off the top of your head, just a couple?
We are getting right now, um, a lot of the endorsements. You will see them soon.
Okay. Which means you're not going to tell me, right?
Not right now.
That's okay.
I, I think she is mentally capable and she is a strong individual and they, I don't see anything wrong with this picture.
Okay.
I think she's mostly, she, she's more stronger than, than many of us.
What are some of the things locally Blanca has accomplished? Uh, cause you know, I know, I know she, she doesn't always stick with the status quo, maybe never. Nothing wrong with that as long as you are making, uh, you know, a statement that, you know, goes somewhere. Um, but with, with all the striking down and, and again, like most people in the city of Victorville, I don't follow all the council meetings. So I don't really know every single thing that Blanca is trying to fight for in the community. I hear bits and pieces, uh, here and there, but you being her campaign manager, you would have a better idea on some of those things. So what are some things that she is trying to accomplish or she has accomplished in her four years for the people in the city of Victorville specifically?
And that is something that, uh, Blanca will have to talk to it because I am the campaign manager on the federal campaign, but not for the local city council. What I know and what I take is the fact that she is, um, she got re-elected for second term with the majority of the votes. That speaks for itself. And the fact that she is being backed down and sarcastically, uh, and, and cruelly, uh, being, they, they've been trying to turn her down and she's been still fighting. I think she's, she has achieved a lot and the people behind her, I think that's, that speaks for itself.
If Blanca was here today in this room, and again, uh, Councilwoman Gomez, you are more than welcome to sit down with me in the future if you, if you choose to, to have a meeting about or a conversation about, uh, locally here in the city of Victorville. But if she was in this room today, uh, what is one thing that you think her, her, uh, local voters and residents in the city of Victorville, what would, what is one thing you think she would like them to know about her moving forward over the next couple of years in the city of Victorville?
I think, um, she would like to know that they can reach her anytime and ask her for anything related publicly, city-related with the city government. And, uh, she stands for them and she will continue the fight for them.
On the national level, what are, what are like maybe the top three things Blanca is, would like to accomplish in, uh, in Congress if elected?
It's Blanca, it's, uh, she stays for accountability of government. She want the government to be accountable for their actions. She stands for transparency of the government. So everybody would know what the, the decisions and how the decisions are made in the government. And, uh, she stands for economic equality. Everybody deserves a job. And, uh, if you go to the, our website, which is, um, the federal election, it's, what you will see there, it's, um, we have the constitution and the top websites where people can find jobs. And that's for a reason. We want to help the people and we are with the people.
All right. All right. Bobby, is there anything else that we got to cover today that you think we should cover in regards to Councilwoman Gomez, the city of Victorville, moving forward?
I think everybody should make decision for themselves where the city stands and the city government. And I would encourage everybody to go to GoFundMe on the Blanca Gomez, look at the video, look at the lawsuit, and read about what are the, some of the articles for Blanca over the years, and make decision for themselves based on that.
All right. Bobby Borisov, he is a congressional campaign manager for 2022 for Councilwoman Blanca Gomez, who will be running for US Congress. Bobby, I want to thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Since this interview, Bobby has reached out to Valley Insider to let us know that he has since stepped away from Blanca's 2022 US Congress campaign and will no longer be involved in any future endeavors with Ms. Gomez. As mentioned in the top of this interview, Ms. Gomez is always more than welcome to sit down with me for a future interview, if she chooses to do so. For Valley Insider, I'm Andrew Caravella.
Today's show is sponsored by Servpro of Hesperia and Apple Valley, like it never even happened. And by collision auto repair specialists in Hesperia, where we meet by accident. Valley Insider podcast is hosted by Andrew Caravella, directed by Tom Bradshaw, executive producer Tim Harris, producer Andrew Caravella, camera operator Lamont Turner, creative consultant Stella Montoya, edited by Fastlane Media, recorded at KVVB TV Studios in Victorville, California. Make sure to subscribe on Spotify, iHeartRadio, Google, or Apple Podcasts. I'm Shane Churchill. We'll see you next time on Valley Insider.
When fire and water threaten your home, hand the cleanup over to the team that stays with you every step of the way in your journey back. Servpro, like it never even happened.
Collision Auto Repair Specialists in Hesperia offers free rental and towing. Their excellent service and quality work is always guaranteed. And any military or public service employees can receive up to $500 off their deductibles. Collision Auto Repair Specialists in Hesperia, where we meet by accident.